Good evening, everybody. This is the Planning Board on December 7th, 2021. The first item on the agenda is to introduce the Planning Board members. So, starting down at my extreme left, Susan Replier. Next to Susan is Von Dugan, and then Peter Goodwin. Mike Hodder is next to me here. He's the Vice Chairman. And to my right is John Thurston. Brad Harriman is the representative from the Selectmen on the Planning Board. And Julie Jacobs is an alternate. The first item on the agenda is a pre-application review for Wiley Brook Campground. For a... That you... Okay. All right. You want to come up? And Tavis, why don't you sort of explain why we're here?
Sure. A couple of months ago, Jim and Beth Sherman came in looking to expand the campground by 12 sites. So, they are here tonight primarily in case the Board has any specific questions. They were awarded the special exception to do the 25% expansion, which equals the 12 sites, earlier this year. And the primary reason for coming here tonight is that because it's expansion of a non-residential use, site plan regulations are required or triggered by the regulations. But this is one of those unique scenarios where nothing is really happening to the site. But what they did was put together a narrative that was in your packet, explaining their intention and things like that. They also put together some images in there showing the area that the campsite or the campground would be expanded. For the purposes of the Board, all of the water is there, and the well capacity is there. It's already been installed in anticipation of this expansion. The same is also true for the septic on-site. All of the roadways are there. There are no new wetland crossings, and there are no wetlands in the area of the expansion. Literally, what's involved with this is the removal of a couple of trees and putting down the gravel pad for the campground sites. Other site disturbance would be extending the water laterals and electric connections to each of the sites. So, from the purposes of the regulations, I don't believe they need to submit anything beyond what they've submitted for the Board to act, but I didn't want to have them submit the site plan package without discussion before the Board. So, if any Board members believe other information needs to be provided...
Okay.
Now's the time. Otherwise, we'll move forward with scheduling the public hearing.
Okay. Yeah, that's basically what our regulations require is a site plan, even though it's not too many reasons to object. But anyway.
Right.
Peter, did you have...
There are no issues with water quality or any infiltration into streams or anything like that?
No. The only stream crossings and things are much lower on the site than this area, and the well is already there and of capacity for the expansion.
Anybody else?
Only question I had was trash removal. Any changes in trash removal?
I imagine everyone carries it to the dumpster from the new sites like the old sites.
Okay.
Or the existing sites, not the old sites.
And will there be sultation control around the ditches? Off to go. Keep it going from the area of the brook?
There could be, but there's nothing near a brook.
Wiley Brook Campground. Wiley Brook must be...
Yes. So, if you turn in off Center Street, you cross Wiley Brook within about 500 feet. You then go almost a quarter mile to the back edge of the property where these sites are expanding.
Not really near the...
No. It would take a sizable storm event.
Okay.
Sizable, like a five-year storm type thing.
It's quite a bit up on a hill.
Yes.
So, Tavis, I'm assuming that they're going to be asking for waivers of some of the site plan regulations?
And that's where I started with the Shermans. The narrative was intended to be a request for a waiver. If the Board would like, we could more formalize. It's essentially waiving site plan regulations.
Okay.
Almost in its entirety, but that can be added to the packet.
Okay. All right. Anyone else have any words of wisdom or requests? Okay, then you'll get your application in. We'll get it on agenda, and then you'll be ready to go.
I'll work with you on the waiver.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much for coming in. Okay, the next item on the agenda is an update to the 2015 building codes. According to the RSA or our ordinance, the code enforcement offices shall prepare an amendment to those portions of the local building code that require to be updated. The Planning Board then is required to hold a public hearing on the update. And, Tavis, you're going to tell us why we're doing this. And then, once we do that, then this is referred to the Board of Selectmen for their final review. Is that correct?
Correct.
So, basically, what we've got are regulations that were adopted in 2003, and so that's why we have to update them. And go ahead.
Correct. So, currently, the regulations state that the town of Wolfboro is enforcing the 2013 IRC and IBC and all the related codes. In actuality, Wolfboro has been effectuating 2015 code since the time of the state adoption, and it was generally overlooked. It's rather common to overlook it. Many municipalities, when they adopt state building code, will adopt whichever state building code is affected at that time, and then put, comma, "as amended" at the end, so you don't have to go through this process. So, the next iteration might be a warrant article to put the words "as amended" at the end of the section. But for the time being, there are hundreds of building permits a year being issued and enforced under the 2015 code, consistent with the state. But the amendment process in Wolfboro, if you're not changing the regulation, is simply to amend the reference, which requires a public hearing with the Planning Board and then Selectmen action.
Okay, and we cannot put in that warning that says "in future revisions"?
To do that requires town meeting.
Yeah. Okay. All right.
We... Big pardon, but we can update them today through a public hearing that we are required to have a town vote if we put in the words "as amended" or "as amended in the future", correct?
I would be happy to include in the memo to the Selectmen that the Planning Board had the public hearing foregoing for 2015 and recommended a subsequent article to amend the language.
Yeah, why don't we do that?
Yeah, right.
And we don't want to go through this again next time.
Yeah, okay.
Which could be rather soon.
Yeah.
Right.
I have a dumb question. Why are these all international codes?
Because the state of New Hampshire has adopted the International Building Code and the International Residential Code.
Okay.
That's just the title of it.
It used to be called Uniform Building Code.
Uniform.
Yeah.
Okay, so...
Okay. Anyone else have any questions or comments?
And please explain again why we can't just adopt the new 2015 building codes.
Because of the way Wolfboro adopted the state building code originally in 2003. They put in a very specific year and then prescribed an amendment process, which we're in the middle of right now.
I see.
Do you need a motion?
Okay, yes. I'd like a motion, if you don't mind.
Are you happy to move?
Sorry? You have to have a public hearing.
Oh.
Public hearing.
Yes.
That's... You actually don't even need a motion. We just need a public hearing.
Fine.
Okay. Sorry about that, folks. Yeah, I'll open the public hearing now on this item.
I can hear you, but the mic is not on.
Turn the mic on, Susan. Turn the microphone on. The button on the side.
There you go.
Yeah. The Board has copies of everything, and I know it's online and so forth, but can you just give me an overview of, like, what codes it's going to affect within the building codes? Is there something that's more prevalent, that stands out, or something that would be of interest to the public to hear about this? Any specifics?
Want to... You want to read these?
Not sure I understand the question.
Well, I don't know what it is that you're doing other than amending some code. So, can you tell us what that code is, other than building code in general?
Okay. The specific building codes we're looking at is the International Building Code 2015 Edition, International Existing Building Code 2015 Edition, International Energy Conservation Code 2015 Edition, International Mechanical Code 2015, International Plumbing Code 2015, International Residential Code 2015 Edition, International Swimming Pool and Spa Code 2015 Edition, the National Electrical Code 2017 Edition, and the State of New Hampshire Fire Code SAF-C-6000. And those can all be found online.
Thank you. That's helpful. Have any of the departments that this affects weighed in on it?
All of the departments are already operating under the 2015 code or 2017 code in the essence of the electrical.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I'll now entertain a motion.
Happy to make a motion that the Planning Board recommend to the Board of Selectmen that it would be altered to reflect that we recommend the adoption of the 2015 building codes enumerated on the attached, so we can update our regulations accordingly.
Do you want to add the...
The only thing is that you missed 2017. Update the building codes as... Because there's a 17 there.
Right.
Yeah, the electric codes at 17.
And the National Electrical Code 2017.
Right, yeah. Okay, and did you want to put in for the future changes?
I think we wanted to add the language "as amended", so we don't have to go through this.
Yeah, right, yeah.
This is a process that occurs naturally. In fact, we've already been using this code now formally.
So, what I heard was recommendation to the Selectmen of adopting as presented to the Board this evening.
Correct.
And consideration of a separate warrant article to amend the language of 21, Section 21, to allow the ordinance to update itself concurrent with the state adoption.
Thank you for the handholding, Tavis. Yes, perfect.
Okay. Somebody want to second that motion?
Seconded.
Okay. Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
An abstain, I think, just because I'll be voting on it at the Selectmen level.
Okay. All right. Very good. Thank you, Brad. Okay, now we've got two public hearings, and this one, Pine Hill Road and Taylor Community. Basically, what we'll do is open the hearing. The applicant will give his presentation or her presentation, speak to any waivers that they would like granted, and then the Board needs to determine if the waivers should be granted, and if they are, we would then say the application is complete. I would then, at that point in time, open the public hearing, so any member of the public can speak to the issue. Once that's over, I'll go back to the Board, find out what their wishes are, and then close the public hearing and vote. Okay, so the first item is the Pine Hill Road Storage Realty LLC, 34 Land Bank Lane, tax map and lot 190-25. This is case 2021-24. This is for a site plan review for storage buildings.
Scott Frankowitz from New Hampshire.
Okay. During your presentation, could you please speak to how you have diminished the coverage on the lot? And also, if you could speak to the stormwater management regulations and the waivers that you've requested?
Okay.
Okay? All right.
Can you hear us, Scott?
As well as whatever else you were going to say.
What's that?
As well as whatever else you were going to say.
Scott Frankowitz from New Hampshire Land Consultants. With me tonight is Chris Pongrass, the owner of Pine Hill Storage. We are here tonight with a site plan to add four units to his complex, I'll call it, out there. This addition is on 34 Land Bank Lane. It already has a structure on it. There's an office and some storage in it. It was a formally approved site plan for Fred Osgood in July 2004. It was for a trash truck storage and dispatch facility. The lot is 1.64 acres. There's no wetlands on-site, and during that site plan approval, they filled the site about five feet, from about zero feet to five feet throughout the site. It's different, but the majority of the site is fill. What we're proposing, and what I have up here for displays, is the top one is the new piece, and the bottom is the complete Pine Hill Storage facility out there. The lighter buildings are the existing buildings that are out there, and the darker brown buildings are the ones we're proposing. And then the dark gray is the new pavement, and the light gray is the existing pavement on-site of all three parcels. Like I said, we're proposing two or four buildings. Two of them are 4,800 square feet, which are the two upper buildings, and the two lower buildings are 3,200 square feet. Proposing a 24-foot aisle width, and then the smaller buildings have a little bit of an apron in front of them for easier access to those of about 16 feet. We are also... We're connecting to Land Bank Lane to the left of the plant or to the north of the plant, and then on the left side, we're connecting back into Pine Hill Storage Facility that already exists, so there's a good circulation throughout the site. That's a 20-foot wide connection into the existing facility. We are proposing 12 parking spaces with one van accessible space. And then each building has a way to get to the center of the buildings, because Pine Hill Storage and I imagine other facilities sometimes will have a hallway down the middle, and they have units on either side of the hallway. So, there's a way to get to the center of the building, and those are located at the parking spaces. The drainage is separated into two systems. The buildings are all collected. They're going to be shed, so they're shedding out to the outside of the site into an infiltration trench on the back sides of the building, which will have a perforated pipe in it. So, what doesn't infiltrate will get transported out by the perforated pipe into a catch base and a couple other things, and then eventually to a drain manhole that will have a outlet structure, a multi-stage outlet structure to control the flow going out of it. The pavement is contained into its own system as well. It's all sheet flow down to the northeast corner, which would be looking at that top land, would be the top left or the top right of the plant. There's a small detention area there with a forbay, and then into the detention area that will eventually go through another outlet discharge structure, multi-stage discharge structure to control the flow going out. Of course, our numbers are all at or below what's existing coming off of the site. Lighting, we use Sharon lighting to do all our lighting design. There's lighting, as he's done throughout the facility, the same type of lighting he's used on his other buildings. The 4,800-square-foot buildings, which are the two on the top, will have three lights along the front, and then there's one light in between the two buildings to light up that parking, and there's two doors to light up those doors as well. The 3,200-square-foot buildings will have two lights, and then there's one pole light as you pull in to the right. There's four or five parking spaces there. It'll just be before that, and that will light up that parking area as well as the door on that end of the building. Landscaping, we've got seven different areas. We kind of place them in between the buildings and at the entrance. There's trees with shrubs around them to meet the requirement. Snow storage, there's plenty of area to throw snow storage. That was one of the comments that Tav...
Oh, okay. So, you started with the arid. Okay, I see. Mm-hmm. All right. Thank you. So, it's more in conformance, since this is 40%. Yeah, okay.
And there appears to be a leach field that exists now, and it...
Any other questions?
Is that a condition listed?
It's kind of a requirement, though.
What was her question?
The question was, is relocating the leach field a condition?
Oh.
I said, no, but it's required.
Okay.
You can't put it under a building.
Hi, how you doing? What type of techniques are you using in the stormwater management areas in each of those zones that you've described? I mean, there's a multitude of different variations. Could you give us a little bit more description? So, how high off the bottom of the trench do you have your perforated pipe to allow infiltration to occur before it starts going into the pipe out to the drainage area?
I did fail to state Bernie Pete... Speak to it, of course.
Just curious about the process going forward, so we have a good understanding on how we're infiltrating our water into the ground, so everybody gets a good understanding that we're making the effort out there and not pushing it off to neighbors' properties to make you look good.
Right.
You know, when the water comes out of that perforated pipe and goes to a catch basin area, what happens to it? You have another design of a catch basin area. You can either have the solid swale, or you can have a medium subterranean layer, and then it goes out. You called it a check something or other. When it either infiltrates in the ground or exits that area, where does it go after that?
Right. So, on Sheet 9 of 11, you'll see the drainage trench detail. That's thrown the perforated pipe six inches off the ground, so the water will go down through that and through the media. We're proposing a common backfill for the area above the pipe, and it gets into a sand bank, sand blanket over the pipe, and then down into the stone that's below the pipe. And then it will infiltrate whatever... And it's all fill there, and it's all really porous fill, so chances of... Even though we have to design it the way we did, the chance of much water going in throughout the system down to the endpoint, which is the drain manhole with the outlet control structure, is very... There'll be very little water probably making it there in reality, but that's the way this is for the roof runoff.
So, when it exits that checkpoint there at the end of...
At the end?
Yeah. Where does it go after that?
It discharges off to the west, which it does currently. And then the other system that's out there, which is the pavement, goes to a detention basin or a forbay first, which will settle out. Any suspended solid should settle out everything, any of the sands and stuff that picks up from the sheet flow going down the pavement. It'll settle out that, and it'll spill over into the detention pond, and then it settles... It will settle out more there, and then you've got the outlet structure, which has multiple different orphies that will let release the water at a controlled rate.
So, those areas that you're going to create, you plan on maintaining those areas so that growth doesn't come up and so forth in the future? Yeah.
Yeah, and I believe there is a...
There is a maintenance page.
Right. General notes in maintenance and construction.
So, when you plow, would it be advantageous to head the snow towards these drainage areas? Is that capable?
Well, of course, not behind the buildings, but in between the buildings and up front where there's... Between the parking, as you drive into the site, and where the detention pond is, there's a substantial amount of area, probably 50 feet, where a lot of snow can be put, and that can melt into the front.
The only reason I say that is, I mean, are you going to plow into those green areas on either side of those buildings, or are you going to come in headfirst and scoop it out of there and dump it to another area? That's kind of what I'm seeing in the practical sense here.
Yeah, and as you know, Chris has been maintaining the whole site. Every site's independent drainage-wise, and he's been maintaining it, so I can let him speak to that more than...
Sure. Please.
Sorry, Chris Pongrass, the owner of Pine Hill Storage, me and my wife. So, we do give a significant expense and effort in maintaining and running a facility like this is snow removal. We do need to shovel every door, given that many doors, and so where and how we move and put snow is something that's carefully considered, because it's a lot of work and, you know, it's a process to go through. If I can move over to the drawing. So, these areas in between these buildings, this is the existing building, so these are the two newer buildings, and they're smaller than the ones that are across from, specifically to allow enough space in these areas, this one, and in particular, this area up in over here, to allow for snow storage. So, we're hoping to put most of the snow in these three specific areas, certainly in the detention pond areas in another place and in this area as well, should we need it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Peter.
I'm looking at a large amount of pavement and buildings, which therefore are impermeable areas, and I'm wondering what percentage of this lot is associated with that as compared to the surface area of the retention pond.
I have to look that. I don't have that.
I mean, you ended up saying you got the area down to less than 50%, I think.
From 60 to 50.
But then again, I'm looking at a retention pond, which is pretty small.
Yeah.
And if we get a two-inch rain event or a three-inch rain event, and you end up putting all that water from the impermeable surfaces of the roofs and the pavement... putting all that water from the impermeable surfaces of the roofs and the pavement into that retention pond, it can't handle it, from what I look at.
Yeah, we've submitted a stamped drainage report, and just so I'm clear, I said a couple times, there's two systems here. All that water is not going to the detention area.
Where is it going?
The buildings themselves have infiltration trenches behind each of the buildings, which are all connected into a discharge point, a drain manhole, which is, as you look at the plan, the second building to the right on the top, there's a drain manhole there that has an outlet structure, control structure in it. We'll release that water at the critical times, peak flows and stuff.
So that water is going to be retained in the ground before it gets to the retention pond?
Right. Whatever doesn't infiltrate will make it, the building water will never get to the detention pond.
I'm just, I'm looking at a huge amount of impermeable space, and I'm worried about it. And have you considered semi-permeable pavements in this project?
We were able to make the drainage work without doing that. Of course, I mean, that's a discussion on every project that we ever do. But because we were able to make it work the way we designed it, that wasn't something that we submitted with the...
But what are your design criteria for rain events?
Well, I have to look at the drainage. I don't have it right with me, but it was whatever the requirement of...
Are you talking two or three inches an hour during a day period, or are you talking about four or five?
Well, your two-year storm is about probably 2.9 inches.
Two-year storms are not what we're going to get in the future.
I know.
But that's what the regulations require them to design to.
But whatever the regulations require us to design to is within that design, and it meets the requirement of the town.
I beg your pardon. So because of the nature of the existing soils, a really coarse, compacted gravel, and we did dig several test pits, and no one has a more vested interest in ensuring that stormwater management, you know, is effective. The site is very pervious in those areas. Once we get the water from the roof into that crushed stone and piped area, I don't believe that, on a practical level, I know it's engineered to do that, but on a practical level, I don't think that there'll be any discharge, okay, out of that pipe, which is intended to handle it anyway. But on a, just on a practical level, I don't think that it'll ever occur, just because of the nature of the porosity of the material that's there, and of course, the crushed stone and pipes that we're going to add.
And I'm also looking at a lot of green, which to me indicates grass, and they have a grass lawn that sheet washes off.
It may be more of an engineering question than I...
If you're dealing with a regulation, then you're probably fine. We can't find a fault with that. But, you know, it's one of these things where it's a heck of a lot of impermeable area, and, you know, you're a long way from streams, so it may not be an issue. But it may be an issue for your neighbors who all of a sudden get a whole lot of water.
So I guess the only thought that I'd add to that is, it's much less impervious than what's currently there, and even the impervious that remains will be treated better than it already is by, I think, a substantial measure, and there's not an existing problem there.
Go ahead, Mike.
Could you speak to your justification for the waiver from the design review standards, please?
The waiver is for allowing metal buildings, the existing facility, they're all the exact same buildings that are out there. He would just like to keep it the same, so it's all conformant, or they all conform with each other in a professional facility.
Okay, would the fact that the proposed buildings be kind of shielded from the road by the pre-existing buildings help at all in justifying the request for the waiver?
It would, and we are set back further from the state highway that is required. I think 150 feet is the requirement.
Mm-hmm.
And between us and the state highway, we have the other two buildings that were approved in 2019 that are constructed.
Right. I'd be happy to make a motion to...
Okay, I just wanted to ask about the traffic flow. I mean, you've got the extension coming up to the existing facility. Do you expect people to use that, or are they going to go back out to Landbank Road?
So we have a couple of years' experience now with kind of the format of how traffic flows at the site, at the, where, we call them buildings five and six, but... Sorry. So these buildings were erected in 2019, so we have about two years' experience understanding what happens with traffic between Pine Hill Road and Landbank Lane. Virtually nobody enters, you know, the facility, these buildings or any other, through Landbank Lane. They all come through the main entrance, which is clearly marked, and that's where our sign is, et cetera. From there, the customers that do utilize the buildings that are over here that haven't accessed up to Landbank Lane, some choose, if they're familiar and they think it's more convenient, will proceed out Landbank Lane. But most of them, I'd say half of them, actually turn around and go back the way they came, because that's just what they're familiar with.
Yeah.
We expect a very similar type of traffic flow with these buildings here. That when people enter or visit them, they will come through our main entrance, come to these buildings, and then leave the way they came. That's not to say some won't also come out this way, but we expect that to be a relatively small amount. We are looking at, we're seeking approval for a total of 80 units, and just, by the way, the statistics fall as far as the average duration, our average customer remains with us for about six months and visits the site about once every seven weeks. You can do the math, that we expect somewhere less than two cars per day total to come to these four buildings.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, John.
Yeah, so to Peter's point, that was the idea about the infiltration trench and the elevation of the pipe allows you more capacity to retain that water for a longer period of time. I mean, the only thing that I could think of is if you raised the pipe in the bottom of the infiltration trench, you'd have that much more capacity, but I don't know if the elevation works at the outflow. That was, that would be the only thing. But back to that road there, are there any improvements that you're going to plan on when it comes out to Pine Hill Road?
Currently, we're not proposing any improvements, and Mr. Pongrats does maintain that road. Even, there's multiple owner, or users of that road, but he does maintain that road throughout the year.
So I'd like to go back to the landscape plan. I don't really see a very good detail of what's going on in there. If somebody could give me a little, point out where their items are.
We kept it similar to what was approved on the other two sites, very minimal tree with some low-growth bushes around each of the trees.
Page you want?
Sheet six of 11. You'll see, coming in the site from Landbank Lane, we're showing one tree on the opposite side of the detention area, as well as another tree. I think that may be an existing, that's a proposed tree as well. So two trees, and then eight shrubs around those trees in the front, and then, as you progress through the site to the south, another tree to the right just before the parking, and then trees and shrubs around, and each of the, between each of the buildings, and then at the end on the left, right after unit four, when you're going back into the existing facility.
So how are those going to work around your snow storage there? That's kind of where we were going with that. Are they going to be able to take the snow piled up around them, and are they evergreens, or are they deciduous, or what's just?
So as far as the location of them, so my understanding of the way the regulation requires them is to be within so many feet of the parking areas, which is kind of counterintuitive to the parking areas are where the snow we need to remove from. So it is a bit challenging, but it is similar to what we're dealing with now. We do have to work around them. We do occasionally wind up with a, you know, disrupted, crushed, otherwise destroyed shrub that we have to address. The trees are generally visible enough and robust enough that they don't suffer any damage during kind of the snow removal process. We also, the reason there's not more, I really like trees, and I think trees are a good thing, and they provide a terrific buffer. The reason you don't see more of them on the plan is just the way the nature where this particular site is oriented with the other sites. The buffer, if you will, that trees would provide is really something that suits itself best between the buildings and the roadway or neighbors, et cetera. And where this site is situated, there's no neighbors or roadway to shield it from, and so there's just, there's not really an opportunity to kind of add that value, if you will, that trees would ordinarily, you know, provide. If it would please the board, would be happy to add trees, fence, et cetera, to the area behind. It's not on technically this site, so I'm not even sure this can be pulled into the discussion, but there's an existing, there's an existing six-foot fence that runs along this property line here. It's in poor condition, and I believe that, I believe that we do own the fence, although there's some degree of uncertainty, but we wouldn't mind putting, restoring that fence, or putting a new fence in that area, perhaps adding a tree or two, or whatever the board thought was appropriate. But putting them up in here is actually counterproductive, I think, in many ways, because having it open is an important feature for security and safety, so people can see around and what's going on in and around the site.
I don't see any need to make any requirements for any trees. They can do it on their own discretion.
That's it? Okay, go ahead, Mike.
Could you just really briefly address the traffic flow from the little stub joining the two properties? You said, I thought, earlier, two cars daily, you, your expected traffic flow there? And if that's the case, you don't really have any kind of traffic control on that stub between the two plots? But if it's more, I'd be somewhat concerned?
Yeah, I'm not sure that I follow the question exactly.
I'm sorry. The little stub of road that you're using to...
This here?
Right. You expect people to be driving in from the main entrance into the back to get to those back storage areas, and then going back out the same way?
Yeah, our expectation is, okay, I mean, there's a couple ways to get there. Our expectation is the majority of traffic will come in...
That's what you said, yes.
Right, and they would go back behind this building and down to their units.
My question is, what volume of traffic do you anticipate? And I thought I heard you say around two cars a day?
That's the way the math works, yes, that we're...
And you really don't need to have any kind of...
Of course, it would be a little busier, say, on weekends, for example, or...
You don't really need any kind of robust traffic controls on that little stub?
I don't believe that we do.
Will it be, it's a two-way road. Will you have it arroded in some way on the road?
It will be 20 feet wide.
I understand.
We weren't planning on arrowing it or putting a stripe on it?
With two cars a day, you feel that that's adequate, that they should be able to figure their way in and out?
I do.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Go ahead, Peter.
I have, I have one further question. As you're talking about how the infiltration behind all these buildings is going to help take care of any water runoff, what happens if it's a time of year when it's all frozen and nothing infiltrates? You know, it's frozen. It's not going to go into gravel. It's not going to go anywhere. It's stuck there, and it's going to go somewhere.
Yeah, and I think that's a problem in everywhere in New England, but the system should function. Hopefully, the, you know, I don't have a clear answer for that. Obviously, if it's frozen, the water's going to run off.
So it's just going to go somewhere. It's not going to go necessarily into the retention pond.
Yes, so respectfully, if the ground is frozen, infiltrating water into the ground is, I just would have to imagine, is always an issue. But I think that there is no real present danger to any neighboring site. This area is entirely wooded, and that is the only thing that's downslope from us. The only direction it could go into is a very large wooded lot, but I think the next building is a couple of thousand feet away.
Are you sure the neighbors are going to be happy with that?
I can't speak to the neighbors. I will say that if, if, I will commit to the board that if there's ever a stormwater management problem on the property, we will address it and take care of it.
Okay, any other questions?
That is the law. You're not allowed to, you're not allowed to direct stormwater onto somebody, but the regulation...
That's why we're looking at those regulations, right?
No, the state law doesn't allow you to do it. They've satisfied the regulation.
Yeah, okay.
We are ambitious to be really good neighbors, okay, regardless of law or regulation. We certainly want to be compliant, and we want to go on the other end of that. And if we're creating a problem for a neighbor, we want to take care of it. Not to mention that I think the neighbor could certainly have recourse if we're creating some problem otherwise.
Okay, any other questions? Somebody want to make a motion on the waiver?
Tried to earlier. I'll make another one. I'd be happy to move that the board approve a waiver from the design review guidelines to allow this proposal to go forward as designed with metal siding on the storage structures.
I second that. Thank you. Somebody want to second that? Okay, all right. Then everyone in favor of granting the waiver, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. Now that we've granted the waiver, the application is complete, so somebody would make a motion?
So moved.
Thank you.
Seconded.
Seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, so now I can open the public hearing on this item. If anyone wants to speak to it, please come on up to the podium. Okay, Tavas, did you have some conditions you wanted us to consider?
Very minor recommended conditions. First is the recognition of the plan set as submitted, including the waiver. Number two, and this is going to come up at the next public hearing as well, the recommended condition is the applicant shall submit a Mylar for recording at Carroll County Registry of Deeds. I would recommend to the board, instead of a Mylar precedent, if you will, that an as-built Mylar be submitted upon completion of the buildings and not be recorded. The town benefits much more from having an as-built plan than a mimeograph of what was submitted to the planning board recorded. Keep in mind, the plans that are submitted are still and remain the controlling document. So I would amend the recommended number two to say applicant shall submit an as-built Mylar for recordation upon completion. Number three, applicant shall coordinate with the town in establishing a construction observation agreement consistent with the site plan review regulations. Again, that's not a bond. That is just a construction observation agreement. Applicant should denote snow storage on the areas on the plan, so that can be a minor amendment to the paper that's in the file, and then ultimately will be shown as part of the as-built. Applicant should be responsible for payment of all recording fees, and then the recommended condition number six simply stipulates that the applicant is also bound by the most restrictive material and any other agencies and permits.
Thank you. Any questions on the conditions or any additions?
Yeah, two questions. One, in the review, under solid waste disposal, what is the larger Pine Hill storage solid waste disposal plan?
They don't have a plan, per se. Their regular existing procedure will account for...
The regular existing procedure, okay. And then we're not requiring construction bonds anymore? Is that what I'm understanding?
It's up to the board if you want to have a construction bond. Typically, construction bonds are reserved for development that becomes public.
Regulations certainly require it.
This is totally enclosed in their property and...
Understood, but we typically have asked for applicant to post a construction accomplishment bond as part of the application process. We're not doing that now. I'm not sure our construction observation agreement is, provides the town the same kind of degree of protection a construction bond provided. I'd be happy to be persuaded otherwise.
And we have, in the past, used those bonds in order to get projects completed.
Yeah, the way they were supposed to have been done with it.
Isn't a CO more essentially doing the same thing? The construction bonds more associated with building roadways and things like that?
No, construction bond, I remember being applied one time for landscaping, which wasn't fulfilled as a part of the conditions of the year.
But that is not a...
It says, in the site plan review, it says the financials surety shall be in an amount sufficient to ensure the completion of all roads, public or private, drainage and landscaping. And that's what our regulations require.
So, not an attempt to persuade, but just an attempt to explain. The construction observation agreement, should the board approve the plans tonight, the plans would go out to a third-party engineer. The third-party engineer would review the plans and come back with a recommended number of... plans and come back with a recommended number of inspections and timing of those inspections, along with an estimated cost to cover the cost of those expect. So, as long as the applicant is complying with the construction observation agreement, there shouldn't be any faltering in the installation of those items. I could see, in the instance of landscaping, the need for a bond, but what the bond requires is then the town exercise the hiring of someone to go install said landscaping and use that fund to pay for those improvements. The other control on that is simply not allowing occupancy or use of the structure until the site plan conditions are satisfied, which would be inclusive of landscaping, stormwater, paving, et cetera.
Okay, I guess, that's, that's fine.
That's just my thought process, the board can-
I'm just concerned about our site plan regulations, want to make sure that we're following them, and do you feel as if we are?
In the, the most recent storage operation that I can recall, we did have to hold up returning the bond money to get some items completed after they were occupied, so.
We can, we can do that. My suggestion is the board wants to have a bond, the board should stipulate which item should be covered by said bond. So if you want it sufficient to cover the landscaping and stormwater, you could do that, if you wanted to go further and have it cover all three, it'd also be done. In this case, there is no roadway.
Right.
There's a stub that's being proposed.
It's not a road.
It's not a technical road, but it is indeed an accessway.
Correct. Earlier iterations of the plan, just to belabor this a little bit more, there wasn't a stub, and the question was, could the stub be installed, or would it be at such a steep slope that it would be impassable? So ultimately, they were able to achieve a 9% or less, I believe, slope, so that it would be usable by the public. But if the board wanted to have a bond set aside, so the applicant would have to come up with an amount and the surety in that amount to cover the asphalt landscaping and stormwater, and that could be added as a condition.
We could look at the precedent of the prior applicant and find out what they were required to bond.
Is it appropriate for the applicant to weigh in on this discussion with the board having? No?
Not necessarily. Since I've been here, I'm not aware of a project that has secured said bond, that the construction observation agreements have occurred.
Okay.
Okay.
I, I, it's, if it's in, if they're in our site plan review regulations, we can waive them as we feel they are appropriate to protect the town. I can see, in this case, making a motion to waive that requirement, given the presentation that we heard tonight, and the fact that, that the project is, is, seems to be well-organized and well-managed. I would like to suggest that the, that the planning board put on its work session, work schedule, a discussion of construction bonds, and their, their application through site plan review for the future, because this is something that's troubled me for the last several months. We have not been doing this, yet we had been doing this regularly in the past.
Right.
And that, that omission is of concern to me, so I think it, it may deprive the town of potential protection, which I know in at least one particular case, we had to, had to institute to get the applicant to do what he had said he intended to do as part of the conditions of approval, and you know exactly what I'm talking about, John.
Yeah, and that's, and that's, I was thinking the same thing, and, and how do you, how do you do that fairly across the board? And, you know, what comes to my mind is, okay, if the third inspection by the engineer could oversee the final aspect of the complete of the project, then, then maybe I would be comfortable with that.
Well, let me rephrase, I, or reiterate, if this project was right up on Pine Hill, and as part of the conditions of approval, there were sidewalk improvements, or streetlights, or very specific landscaping, or the board had required a certain landscaping to a certain, you know, three-inch trees, not inch-and-a-half trees, in, in support of a waiver to make something else in terms of the architectural design standards or make the site work, that is something that I think needs to be bonded, because there's a lot of pieces that work together to satisfy what the planning board approved.
Then in this case, the applicant can very simply say, I'd like to have a waiver from the construction bond requirement of site plan review, and this board can give that waiver as it feels it needs to.
Correct.
But I would, I don't like to have a blanket decision that we're not going to require a construction bond on any application that comes before us.
Understood.
Okay.
Okay, well, would you like to make a motion?
I'd like to hear from the applicant if he'd like me to make a motion first before I do.
We would like to ask for the waiver from the construction bond in lieu of, you know, the, of the construction observations and stuff that are required.
So moved.
No, he, he doesn't get to make the motion.
Well, all right, using his words, so moved.
Okay.
I'd, I'd be happy to make, to, to, to propose to the board that the board waive the requirements since I plan review for, for construction bond requirement.
Okay, I'll second that.
I would add, in this case.
Yes.
Well, it only applies to this case, it's a motion to this case.
But to make it explicit-
In this case.
And, and your sentiment is, we need to be saying this for all cases, and in this particular case, we can waive it.
In this case.
In this, right, and then we don't have to change the regulation?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Okay, everybody all set with that?
We have a second?
Yes, I'm seconded. Okay, everybody in favor of granting this waiver, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, and now we can go on to approving this application.
I, I have one question before, before that, just a lot of the boards-
Okay, the, the public hearing really does need to be closed at, at this point, we're about to vote on this.
Ask me later.
Right?
You didn't close it yet, but yeah.
No, it hasn't, I think it's still open.
Okay, well, go, go ahead, then.
I just want to make sure we're, we're crossing all our Ts, dotted our Is. A lot of the boards are, are voting on regional impact or no regional impact, I don't know.
Good catch.
I don't want it to come back and, and invite us.
Statute requires the board consider with every application whether or not it believes there to be a regional impact or not. In this case, tap dead center in town, there's no regional impact, but my guidance to the board in future will be a recommendation that, in consideration of, before discussing any project, you determine whether you believe it has a regional impact or not.
I'd be happy to move that this board considers this application to have no regional impact. Seconded.
Okay, I'm closing the public hearing.
Scott works in Northwood a lot, that comes up a lot.
There's lots of horses running around outside now, aren't there?
Okay, motion has been made and seconded to approve this application. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Densions? Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you very much, folks.
Thank you.
Kathy, and you?
Thank you.
Okay, next, next item on the agenda, Taylor Community, this is on Taylor Drive, tax map and lot 203-47, case number 2021-25. This is a site plan review for an assisted living facility.
Good evening, Michael Flaherty, I'm the president for Taylor Community. We're here to answer some questions on the site placement of a proposed building on the proposed site on our property. We've got four folks here that can help answer some of your detailed questions. Mark Moller, who is our architect, Nick Slagel, who's our civil engineer, who will speak first and answer some of your questions, Kirk Bezwick, who is our vice president of facilities for Taylor Community, and Jeff Downing, who is our construction manager from CCI. So, Nick?
Okay, and there are several things that I'd like you to speak to. First of all, this is here by way of a special permit granted by Zoning Board of Appeals back in 1999, and then the planning board approved a special use in site plan in January and February of 2000. But the things that, that I'm sort of interested in is, one, could you please speak to how you are meeting the height requirement? The stormwater management regulations, if you could explain to us how, how you're dealing with that set of the regulations? The landscaping of the parking lot, I'm really interested in whether you feel as if you've complied with that, because it doesn't seem to me as if, as if you have. Also, the architectural design regulations, if you could speak to that? Parking requirements, that was on the site plan, and also the screening of the mechanicals on the rooftop, you can also speak to those issues, in addition to everything else that you were about to say.
Okay, sure. My name is Nick Schedule, I'm professional engineer with DuBois &amp; King, so, responsible for the civil site design. I'm going to kind of run through the existing conditions, existing site, and then explain how this is redevelopment in relation to the approved site plan from 2000 that you So, this is the overall parcel map. Bay Street is located on the eastern side, and Filterbed Road is on the western side. The existing use is elderly housing cottage-style residences, and our, our proposed site location is on this northeast corner of the property, where there's existing development related to a driveway and utilities that were installed as part of the original approved site plan to put eight cottages in this location. So, just looking at existing conditions, this is a blown-up view of what the existing conditions look like. You can see the access driveway that's there now, that will be demolished. The, the site is on what I'll call more or less a plateau of fill that was, was part of the original site plan, and drainage from this site is, is generally to the south and north and east, and drains to adjacent wetlands, which drain to this area, and then kind of loop all the way around to leave the property in this location. So, how we're addressing stormwater management on the site, we've provided a hydrocat analysis, which uses TR-55 analysis, it's a unit hydrograph where you use different storm events. We've got a one-year storm event, a two-year storm event, and a 25-year storm event, which are different rainfall amounts, intensities, based on those storm events, and we take those rainfall amounts and compare how that impacts existing conditions, and what the runoff is for existing conditions, and then we try and match those conditions under our proposed conditions through the use of stormwater management techniques with catch basins, pipes, filtration devices, and detention. Part of the initial development of the site will be installing fencing around the disturbed area, and silt fence and, and sediment controls, so that we're protecting the surrounding areas. Our goal here is to, to lower the site to more natural grade where what was there before this fill and, and driveway was installed. The proposed site plan shows, this is Taylor Drive, this is the loop road that goes around the neighborhood. We'll have a driveway access here, and then one-way road that would provide access to the front entrance, a covered entrance, entryway, where you can have drop-off while still maintaining a lane of, of through traffic around, and then exiting back onto Taylor Drive adjacent to where the existing driveway is now. We'll also have parking to accommodate the use, so the, the proposed use includes congregate care, assisted living, a healthcare building. The requirement for parking is one space for every three beds. There are 61 beds proposed as part of the building, and, so that requires 21 parking spaces. What we've provided is 34 parking spaces, just to accommodate employees and shift changes and, and things of that nature, so we've, we've met the parking requirement and provided a little bit in addition to what the zoning requires. From a stormwater standpoint, I'll show you the utility plan. We'll have, there's existing water in Taylor Drive. We're going to abandon the existing water and install a hydrant at the stub where that water is, is now, so there's an existing eight-inch line that goes into the site that's part of those eight cottage developments that was installed. That will be abandoned, capped, and install a hydrant there so that provide fire protection. And then we'll have a new tap, bring water down into the, into the mechanical room for the building, and there's sewer also on Taylor Street, Taylor Drive. So we'll have a combination of sewer coming from the upper levels as gravity, and then from the lower basement level as a, a pump station. In addition to requiring it to be pumped, we're going to have a commercial kitchen in the, in the facility, so the sewer will also have an oil-water, or, sorry, a grease trap to address any, you know, kitchen waste and, and greases that are associated with a commercial kitchen. We have done a fire flow test, actually, this morning, so just new information. We flowed the hydrant that's existing at the site, so that we could get an idea of what the fire flows available are for the, for the, this location within the distribution system, and using the flows that we calculated today, and then what we do is assume a residual pressure where we would drop the system pressure down to 20 to find out what the available fire flow would be during a fire event, so that's just short, it's 1,982 gallons, I believe, was the exact number, so just short of 2,000 gallons a minute that's available for fire flows, so a significant fire flow capacity is there. The, the existing system pressure is about 100 PSI in this location, so stormwater is going to get, the site gets graded from plan north to south. There are catch basins located within the parking areas, so the parking areas are curbed with granite curb, and runoff is directed towards the catch basins. There's two catch basins in parking area, a catch basin along the access drive in these two locations, and then those catch basins come into a structure that then utilizes a outlet device and directs stormwater into a sand filtration, underground sand filtration unit. And so we've detailed that on the plans that shows how that system works. It's a proprietary system that, that has a clear operations and maintenance plan that the, the owner would follow in order to make sure that it's properly functioning. Stormwater continues downhill. I should say that we have a finished floor elevation for the floors, first floor coming into, to the building here, and then a basement entrance with a loading dock at the rear of the building. So, as you're coming down this driveway, you're, you're dropping in elevation, and you're coming up adjacent to a retaining wall with a courtyard that all exists on the first floor level of the, the structure. So we've got turnaround access for loading dock, we've got a trash waste management system here with dumpsters and compacters, and all of that is kind of hidden in the, in the lower portion of the site and, and away from the driveway, away from the Taylor Drive. Additional stormwater management is provided through what's called a focal point biofiltration system. So again, it's a proprietary device, it's a more or less biofiltration that happens within a, within a, a box, a concrete structure. So water goes in, gets filtered through, and then discharges out. So, again, in terms of stormwater management, our goal here is to, to mimic existing conditions. So, again, in terms of stormwater management, our goal here is to mimic existing conditions and match existing flows. So, we've done that for the one-year, the two-year, and the 25-year storm events. And discharges go basically where they're going now, to the adjacent wetlands. And then, as I mentioned, it kind of meanders its way around the site, and then back underneath through culverts adjacent to Filterbed Road. We'll have onsite underground electric utilities and under drains, and then roof, there's a flat roof section. That runoff gets collected and drains within the roof, and then that is directed out to the courtyard area where we have catch basins that then direct it into that sand filtration unit. So, anything that lands on the flat portion of the roof is collected and treated through that sand filtration. Anything on the outer portions of the roof would come to a drip edge. And again, we've got under drain system, stone along the foundation, and an under drain system that collects that water and directs it to our discharge low point for the site. In terms of lighting and landscaping, we show several shade trees, more or less street trees along the parking lot. We've got two in the front, and then another five along the island area between the drive access and the parking lot. And then we've got significant buffer that we're building adjacent to the project to screen cottages that are adjacent to the project. We've got some landscaping in the back adjacent to the patio that will be a walkout patio. That patio is adjacent to the kitchen space and dining area. So, the idea would be that during warm periods of time, residents could enjoy meals outside on that patio. The remainder of landscaping is really just trying to maintain what we can for natural buffer around the site. So, there are some significant white pines that would remain as part of the clearing operation. So, those white pines that are adjacent to the wetland and down at the bottom of the slope, those, to the extent that we can, we'd maintain those. And potentially, if we need to, if we lose them because of roots, we could more or less plant stuff along that buffer. And then we've got details on how that landscaping is installed.
I was concerned about the parking area where you don't show any landscaping.
Are you? We show landscaping, two trees on either side here, and then we're maintaining areas where we can keep snow storage. So, you can imagine, these trees would allow for snow storage between them. And then we've got snow storage areas along this location. We've got snow storage that can be... Snow storage along parking here, snow storage between trees in this area, some snow storage along Taylor Drive, and then a significant area for snow in this location, and then some snow storage in this location.
Okay, well, it was at the bottom, those parking spaces. Maybe Tavis can speak to that. Do you feel as if they have met the requirements?
Well, if you separate that lower parking area out by itself, it's not large enough to require the trees that are required in the parking by the number of stalls. But I felt it was generally satisfied, because what isn't very clear, especially at the distance you guys are from here, that's all essentially woods along that whole bottom edge.
Yeah. This is all wood.
Yeah, okay.
And the fact, I mean, you have the plan that shows where the limit of existing disturbances. I think it's on the other side. Everything outside that line, I mean, this shows that...
Okay, all right, good.
There will be a buried propane tank on the site to address some of the heating and cooling, and I think maybe the gas stoves for the fireplaces and possibly kitchen appliances. I think I covered what you wanted. If there's questions, I'm happy to answer.
Can you speak to the height?
Sure. So, the height requirement, I'm probably going to defer to the architect who's here. But I can say that, basically, the height requirement has to do with the existing average grade around the building, which we've calculated using the survey equipment to get grades around the building. And then Mark will speak to how that gets interpreted into the building plan.
Okay.
And the fire marshal is not worried about getting people out of the third floor?
So, we didn't get any comments from the fire marshal during TRC. We're certainly going to work with the fire department in order to, during the building permit process, and make sure that we meet all the building permit requirements and building codes for fire.
Okay.
Can I ask him a snow storage question?
It'll be reviewed by the state fire marshal. I should also say that this project is, from a drainage standpoint, which may be worthwhile to you, the site is going to be reviewed by alteration of terrain permitting as a result of the overall land development that happens on this site. This was, when we got approved back in 2000 with the town, there was a process with the state called the site-specific permit. At that time, that's the predecessor of alteration of terrain. So, we're going to be submitting application to the state for alteration of terrain, and they have an extensive review of the drainage design and stormwater management, as well as erosion and sediment control features for the site.
Has that application been submitted?
It's in the process. We've been in discussions with the state. We recently completed the soils survey, the site-specific soil survey last week. So, we're just waiting on a couple of things. We didn't want to submit the application without that information, so we wanted to have a complete application. We'd also like to have conditional, you know, we're looking for conditional approval from the town in order to move forward with submitting that application. As you can imagine, there's significant fee associated with applying to the state, over $3,000 fee. So, just part of that process, we want to make sure we're kind of moving in the right direction before we make that investment.
Okay, and just a second before you...
So, your snow storage, you're still on the snow storage solid, ask the question. So, you did a nice job with your plan, exceptional. Wish it was a little bit more detailed, so we could have seen it from this angle. It's kind of, we don't really get a good image, but I can see it on the plan here. But your snow storage areas, is there a universal calculation method that you use for the amount of surface area that you've come up with?
There isn't. I mean, it's always a challenge. I think, you know, you never know what that snow, you know, that big event you're going to get. And you think about, like, last year, we got a huge, that huge 36-inch snow event that kind of came out of nowhere, but it really was a fluffy snow. And then you wait a couple days, and it all condenses. So, calculating snow storage is a challenge, because you have a lot of factors in how much moisture content is in there, where the snow is stored. If the snow is stored in sunny areas, it's more likely to melt quicker and provide you more opportunity to pile on top of it. Ultimately, you know, Kirk can speak to the snow removal aspect of their operation. They're very familiar with snow removal, based on what they do at the Laconia campus, as well as what they do at the Wolfborough campus, as well as Sugar Hill. So, snow removal is certainly something that we've worked hard with them to make sure we've addressed. And in terms of, you know, the planning board, hopefully, we've made that clear to you. If snow storage that we provided on the plans doesn't become adequate, I think Taylor community is committed to doing what's necessary to remove snow from the site, so that there's adequate storage capacity for future storms.
Okay, so, you know, this is a community that's going to be coming and going. What I always think about snow is, you know, when there's three or four inches coming down, and you've salted, and people are driving, and then you've got all that nasty black stuff, and then you go to slide that stuff off, so you can have people come and... When you pile that black stuff, or that snow that ends up that black pile at the end of the year, I mean, you've got this areas off to the side. Are you seeing that water stay in in that one spot? Or, you know, what I like to see is a drainage area where it takes that water and puts it into your drainage area, and gets that infiltration area, rather than, I mean, so if it melts, does it run back into the parking lot and create ice later on? Or, I mean, those are the things that I look at when I see the grade.
Where we've shown snow storage, it really is graded away from where the parking is. You know, snow that's collected from these sites is, tends to be very clean. This is a more or less a private community. There's not a lot of trash that gets, you know, they're very good at managing trash. So, the snow, you know, I don't think we really see that same black kind of material that you see in like a shopping center or something like that, where there's a little less control over what is on the surface of the pavement before it snows. Certainly, you know, where we have snow storage areas, we've got them located outside buffer areas, where we're trying to allow for that drainage to, that snow to melt, and then drain to buffer. So, it's a natural process where it can sheet flow to adjacent low-lying areas. And during that sheet flow process, you know, it's actually a treatment process as it goes through the buffer.
I have a question about the drainage. As in, you have many catch basins, which seem to be associated with paved areas.
Could you repeat that?
You seem to have catch basins, which are associated with paved areas. And in the wintertime, if those catch basins end up being covered with snow and ice, they're not going to catch much. And so, therefore, I would hope that your plowers and people like that are going to be dealing with making sure that those catch basins are pretty clear.
Absolutely, yeah.
The other one that I had, and I'm sure that you've thought about this, is that you seem to have a lot of water draining into the central area there that has the gardens and things like that. And if those particular catch basins get covered up, you may have flooding somewhere. But I'm sure you're figuring that one out. But, you know, the winter is tough.
Absolutely. I mean, I think, you know, it's been something that's been done for years in terms of, you know, technology. Catch basins are the proven technology, having grades that can be maintained, having a maintenance system that makes sure that those are your target areas. So, I think an operations and management plan for those during snow removal is something that they're familiar with.
I mean, the issue is that if there's a huge amount of water which is coming out, then it ends up going down into a watershed, which we worry about.
Absolutely.
And, you know, so that's something that, you know, it may need, you know, it may be that we should state that you need to have proper training of your snow removal people to make sure that those catch basins are free, so that they can do their job.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's common sense for managing the building, that they would maintain the drainage around the building in order to make sure that the building doesn't flood. That's just kind of, I think, common sense for owning a building and making sure that you're not going to flood it. The reason we put those catch basins there is for that reason, so that water can get directed to them and be directed away from the building. And then it does go into a treatment system before it goes out to adjacent...
And the state law ends up indicating that if that water goes and causes problems with other properties, you're at fault. Therefore, you need to maintain...
Right, so I think that's why they've spent the money to do the drainage design, and using, you know, normal and accepted engineering practices in order to do that drainage design. So, you know, I, as an engineer, will stamp the plan, certifying that I'm using best practices and a accepted method to design the stormwater system.
But you, as the engineer, are not the person who's maintaining it 20 years from now?
That's right.
Hi, I'm Kirk. I'm the VP of Facility. So, you're right. So, we could have the best-laid engineering plans, and if the people on the ground don't follow any of those things, then that plan doesn't work. I've been working with Nick, DuBois &amp; King, in previous, in another iteration, Steve Smith Associates. And one thing I've learned over the years is that compliance never stays the same. So, in my 30 years of doing this, in the old days, you'd plow, you'd sand, you'd salt, and you'd do your best you can. Today, there's a requirement, and with every project, we've evolved to the point now that our stormwater and our snowplow operations plan requires every one of my trucks that plows and salts and sands has a clipboard in the truck, and we record how much salt, how much sand we put down, and where it went. It's a requirement of something that we submit as part of these big site plans to the state. So, what I can tell you is that, you know, our type, our operation's not like maybe what you've seen before. You know, when we're talking about elderly residents, we're talking about people that are at risk for slipping and falling. We may have ambulances coming, we have doctors visiting. So, our, the goal of my department is to make sure access to our places is always there. So, we don't wait for the snow to build up to six inches and then go, okay, the contractor should show up now. When it snows, we're plowing, you know, we're maintaining it. The CEO and Taylor community provides whatever equipment is the right piece of equipment to make sure we have the right stuff to do it, and we do a really good job at snow removal. When you look at the site plan that DuBois &amp; King has presented, I mean, it's pretty obvious, we're putting a good-sized building in a peninsula of land, and we're making it work, but it's a tight fit. So, my responsibility is now, you know, we're going to put snow where it has to go. But in all honesty, when we have a 40-inch snowstorm like we got that last year in Meredith, we had to pick up, we spent two days picking up snow out of Laconia and moving it, because you couldn't see over the corners, right? So, part of any snowplow plan or storm management means that if you have those events, you pick it up and you relocate it, and it may go somewhere else. Because, you know what, it becomes a hazard when you can't see over those snowbanks, when, you know, when that stuff melts back into the sidewalks and onto the roadways. So, I just want to assure you that we already have plans in place for all of our other properties. We deal with this all winter long. We do all of this work ourselves, none of it's outsourced to anybody. And now with the purchase of Sugar Hill, we've extended that reach, because now we have staff right here in Wolfborough every day of the year. Hopefully, that answered some of your questions. And now I'm going to hand it off to Mark, he's going to explain about the building height now.
Good evening. My name is Mark Muller from JSA Design Architects in Portsmouth. I wanted to just start with the color rendering, which I believe you all have in your packet, just to give you an overview of what the character of the building's going to be, and what some of the proposed materials. We're still in the early stages of evaluating the specifics of the materials, but our intent, I think, is fairly clear in the depiction that you have in this rendering. It's essentially a three-story building. There is a walkout basement component on the rear of the building. This is a view that you would have from Taylor Drive as you enter the existing community that is there now. You'll see a drop-off, the port cochere that you had seen in the site plan, the main entrance, there's some one-story porches that help visually reduce the scale even of this three-story component. Introduction of additional ground-level porches, as well as we've endeavored to try to bring the visual height down. Dimension aside, what we're trying to make sure we do is make this building a good neighbor to what exists there. And it's essentially a collection of single-story buildings. So, we're borrowing from that vocabulary of residential-style buildings. So, we're utilizing similar windows, we're utilizing what will be seen as sidewall shingles, there may be some clabbards at the ground floor. So... So very familiar materials are going to be used. But make no mistake, it's a very robust building. The building is type 2 construction, so it's steel and concrete. It's a non-combustible construction, even though it looks like a nice wooden cottage. Your specific question was how are we dealing with the height requirement? As Nick pointed out, and I'm going to pull this drawing down and direct your attention, I realize it's maybe difficult to see from here, but this is also in your packet. This is a cross-section that's essentially cut through, you know, we've got this sort of C-shaped building, and this is a cross-section that goes through that courtyard, the port cochere being on the far left. So the typical, the typical building section is what you would see on the left, and this appears a bit wider because the section cut is cut sort of on an oblique angles, why this looks wider. But essentially, these wings are the same width. And as Nick said, the existing natural grade, what we've done is have done our best to position the building on the site at a finished-floor elevation that is essentially the same, it's within just a few inches of the existing grade that is there today. So we're not lifting the ground floor and then grading up to it. We're really essentially within, I believe we're within six inches of that existing grade, which is, existing grade is at elevation 549, excuse me, 545 and 9 inches. So that is the starting point for any vertical measurement, is that 549, again, 545 and 9 inches. Your ordinance allows for two different interpretations for the roof height. If you have a 10 and 12 roof pitch, which is what we have all along the perimeter, the essentially asphalt shingle roof that you'll see all along the perimeter is a 10 and 12 pitch. So 10 vertical feet of rise for every 12 horizontal. When you meet that steepness, you're permitted to calculate to the midpoint. So an imaginary line is struck between the eve and the top of that. That midpoint is where you measure the height of the roof. It's an average. And that is, that average is measured from, again, that grade plane of the existing grade. And it was based on actual calculation of where the footprint of the building is. Even though there are portions of the building footprint where it's lower at the end, it's the average all the way around of that footprint that is calculated to come up with that average grade. So it was very carefully placed and carefully calculated. And then we set and have gone to pretty remarkable lengths, frankly, to sort of squeeze everything that we need within this building to allow us to calculate that midpoint of that roof in under 35 feet. So we're at 34 feet, 9 and 3/8 of an inch to that midpoint of that 10 and 12.
Thank you.
So I have a comment, just, and it may be toward the board. The question arises, is this a flat roof? Or is it because it has a parapet around it that has the slope into it, you know, that exists maybe in the first 15 feet of the building? The illusion is excellent, you know, that it's a full-pitched roof all the way around. And personally, I don't have troubles with this, but it is kind of a flat-roof building, which would have a 30-foot requirement as opposed to a 35-foot requirement. But I think it's disguised as a building that is a 10 pitch or 12 pitch, correct? Is it a 10 pitch?
10 and 12, yes.
Yeah. So that's just a comment to consider. I mean, people...
I had a similar question. How much lower is the flat deck than the 34 and 9?
Well, presently, the flat deck is slightly above the 35-foot limitation. That's a function, frankly, of just shaping the trusses that we have in order to allow a lot of mechanical equipment to run above the third-floor ceiling. So we're still working with our mechanical engineer to determine a number of things. The size of the equipment that is on the roof, we're always trying to make it smaller. And the second thing that's being worked on presently is the amount of distribution that we're trying to get. Obviously, if we can continue to pull this down and squeeze that plenum depth, we're trying to do that.
So the determination, to Von's question, the determination that was made is, the ordinance doesn't say the 1012 consists of a roof that goes from side to side of the building, if you will, to an apex at a point, and you have 35 of what typically is wasted space in a building. So the determination was made that this building does meet the height limit as it's under 35 feet. Something else I was expecting the board to question was the two mechanical units that are above the limit, but those are allowed in the ordinance. You're allowed to exceed 35 feet.
Yeah, I understand that. I just wanted to know how they were screened. That was all.
Well, the applicant had requested a variance that would allow much of this discussion to not be needed right now by extending the roof even higher, et cetera. But they were denied a variance for the additional four feet to do that.
Additional four feet?
Well, there was, there was a time where we were trying to make the building taller. Essentially, we were trying to make this roof tall enough that those pieces of mechanical equipment were entirely within the attic.
So here's another, just minor point for our ordinance. You know, the top of this roof and the eve could be interpreted as this beast down here as well. And therefore, the midpoint would be somewhere, you know, that's playing...
The ordinance has lots of want that, yes. I suppose you could go down to the portico too, if you wanted, or perhaps the eve on the back of the...
Yeah, there are lots of gray area.
Admittedly, it is a gray area. It's very difficult, I mean, I deal with different zoning ordinances all over the place, and everyone has a different, different way to try to deal with, you know...
To that point, though, I've never seen, when I was out west, I call them the witch's slide. That's what strikes me, that I don't know what the architectural term is for that roof that plunges like that. Yeah, I call it the witch's slide. I've never had any community use that eve line as the, but you're correct, the way it's written, one could base it on that.
Is, given that there's a whole lot of woods to the south of this, towards Pine Hill Road, is any of this building really going to be seen from Pine Hill Road?
Doubtful.
So the only place it's really going to be seen is by the, from the access road to the community?
Yeah, that's why this view was crafted, and that's why we've kept, you know, kept it the three-story expression, basically facing the Taylor community itself. You've seen the garden, I haven't really gotten into, and maybe you don't need to hear what's going on inside the building so much. But the landscape courtyard that does exist, which does face the south side, and that's why we've oriented the building the way we did, so that that courtyard can capture that sun.
Could you address where you are right now with exterior materials, colors, paint, and that sort of thing?
Yes, as I started to say, we're evaluating what the specifics are. What you see before you is just a number of materials that would be very familiar. So starting at the top, a very traditional asphalt shingle, it'd be an architectural style, so that there's a variegation of color and thickness.
Could you be specific as to what has been decided as opposed to what is still being discussed? Will you be using architectural shingles for the roof?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
That's the kind of thing I'd like to get into the record.
Okay, very good. So there are virtually no areas that will have a rubber roof that will be visible to anybody other than someone on an upper floor. For instance, at the port cochere, there will be a center area that will have a rubber roof, only visible to people on the third floor. And as we've already discussed, the roof does have a center area that is flat, which will also have a membrane roof. But what you see, what the passersby will see, will be an asphalt architectural grade shingle. There will be a significant amount of casing and trim, everything that you see, these little white areas, and it's illustrated to be this material. What we're looking at, the product that we're proposing to Taylor community is a polyash product. It's a, it's a very, very durable, it's not plastic, it really has a fly ash component and some resin. So it basically is impenetrable from water. It will not rot. It will last forever. That we're considering for all of the window casings, panels, fascias, the decorative trim that you see in these gable areas. All of the area that's indicated in this bluish-green color will be a square-cut shingle expression, sidewall shingle. We're evaluating whether we can find a manufacturer of that same polyash material, which would be our preference. We're still looking. There are other, I've done the same detail in many instances out of a fiber cement product. There are also some vinyl products that are perhaps usable. They don't have the same kind of flexibility. For instance, this is suggesting that you might have a shingled corners in some places. So we're still evaluating what material can actually give us this look. Then there are some small areas at the base of this major front gable and under the front porch, the pedestals of the port cochere, it will be a decorative veneer stone that we're considering.
Okay, thank you.
Out of curiosity, although it's not in our regulations, what are your R-values for roofs and walls?
Well, we have, we are intending to exceed code minimums. The, the way that we'll continue to evaluate that, obviously, budget will drive some of those decisions, but certainly, we're looking to exceed code wherever we can. And that's, that is the most cost-effective way for any, any building owner to save money in the long run, is just build the most robust envelope that they can. So whenever, it's the shortest dollars to spend in order to save money in the future.
Other questions?
So tagging along with the previous application, we'll, I believe we'd request a waiver for the site security.
Bond.
Bond. That's the only waiver I'm aware that we'd be requesting. Our justification for that would be that, you know, the Taylor community has demonstrated, you know, demonstrated that they're willing to, you know, put this project through to fruition. They would have a construction observation inspection protocol where anything that's shown on the plans would need to be installed and built to the satisfaction of the town through the town's construction observation agreement. And in order to get a certificate of occupancy and for this building to be, you know, actually used, then we would expect to meet all of those conditions that would be the same conditions of a bond.
I'd be willing to make that motion and support it also. I'd also be willing to make a motion for a second waiver, which has not been asked for by the applicant yet. But in terms of, in terms of the construction bond, I think, given the nature of the project, given the nature of the people conducting the project, given the fact that this is part three of a project, two parts of which, one part of which is already in the ground and the other part of which we've approved and is currently being constructed, I don't think we need to use a construction bond as a club to hold them to the conditions of approval. Based upon the track record that they've shown in part one and that they're showing in part two, I think we can have some confidence that in part three, they'll do the same sort of thing. So I'd be happy to make that motion.
Have a said some comment?
The only thing I would suggest to the board is this project is much larger than the last application. And not knowing the construction schedule, COVID jokes aside, it may be prudent to have the applicant agree to bond any portion of site improvements not completed at the time that occupancy is requested. So if it happens to be, oh, say, this time next year when everything is done, but the top coat of asphalt or landscaping, for example, that we not hold occupancy or utilization of the building without a bond securing that, move it forward.
The landscaping portion of this project is minuscule compared to the overall size and cost of the project. I think holding a bond for that small portion over the applicant's head is sort of unnecessary, in my opinion.
All I was suggesting was that if they wanted occupancy when the project wasn't completed, that the uncompleted portions be bonded.
I would be very surprised to, if they asked for a CO with portions of this project still unbonded, it looks to me like this is a project that they want to have as a turnkey fully completed before the individuals come into the process.
Offering it as a branch to the board in the regulations.
Well, I'm still going to be happy to make the motion that we waive the construction bond requirement of the site plan review regulations at the applicant's request. And that's a motion.
Somebody want to second that motion?
I have a question. So when you look at the landscape plan, it is quite extravagant. And what's, what are we going to, what are we going to do the next time somebody comes in front of us again?
We're not setting a precedent. We're waiving something that we have the right to waive if we want to waive it for good reason. I think there's good reason to waive it in this case. It's on our work schedule to look at whether or not we should hold every application's feet to the fire and require it of every single one of them, or exercise our right to waive this construction bond based upon the nature of the project that we're looking at.
Okay, so who's going to inspect the landscape plan after it's completed, if we waive it?
The same person who would inspect it if there were a construction bond.
Correct.
Yeah.
Is there a second to...
I'll second it.
Okay, all right. Okay, everyone in favor of the motion to waive the requirements for a bond, please say aye.
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 Opposed?
I think we do need to come up with criteria for these waivers.
Yeah, much like we did with architectural design.
Yeah.
Do them all the time or not?
Well, it may have been that it should have been done, you know, what is the criteria normally for a construction bond?
Typically, municipalities hold a construction bond if a portion of the project is for the public benefit.
As a certain percent.
Correct.
And so therefore, had a bond been...
The one I'm most comfortable with is that, or most familiar with, and this is across many jurisdictions, is 100% of the project cost. And as the elements are completed, the bond amount is reduced. So then you end up with some developers who would prefer to have a large line of credit. But then the municipality ends up making sure that the deadlines don't pass and the bond doesn't lapse, and you spend a lot of your time chasing the paperwork instead of actually looking at the project. Others post a large cash surety, and then the money is released over time. Others post a large cash surety, and then the money is released over time. But typically, it's, you know, we're doing a subdivision, we're proposing a town road, okay? So 110% of that.
Can we stick to this?
He was asking the basis of it. I tried to answer him.
And I would say that in this particular case, in order to get the CO, they're going to need to have all their ducks in a row. And how, the building is habitable, the building is functional and all that. And so the only thing that might be considered in this particular case would be landscaping and that kind of thing.
Site.
You might put $10,000 as a bond, but, and as a total, I'm not saying to change what we're doing, but that would be something that I think you could consider. And that would essentially say that, you know, make sure you finish it, yeah, you finished it, we gave the bond back. And as a percentage of the cost of the total project, it's not going to break them.
Okay. Anything else from the applicant?
Questions?
Okay, all right.
So I'm going to start off with the, back to the drainage plan for you. I'm on eight of 18 here. This is a huge building. You have three roof lines that come down in this front foyer here. And when I'm on eight of 18, I think all I'm seeing is one catch basin right out in the middle. But when you overlay that onto the landscape plan, that ends up being right in the mix of tree plantings and so forth there. And I'm just, I just have a super hard time thinking all that water's just going to end up in that one drain right in the middle of that area. So I'm just, I have a process I'm going to follow here, but I'm just going to start with that one first. You know where I am?
No.
Right, right, see, yeah, right, right there. That's the one drain. But when you overlay the landscape plan, it's right in the middle of a plant or something. I mean, I'm talking about all this water that's going to come off the roofs and everything and supposed to end up getting to that thing.
Yeah, we've gone through a few iterations on how the courtyard is laid out. There's, it's an art and a science in terms of, we have two wings here. We have a memory care unit and an assisted living unit. So that courtyard is actually separated down the center to segregate people who are in memory care and people who are in assisted living, just based on the needs of those patients. So most likely, what you're finding in trying to overlay those two is that maybe there was a shift in where the walkway was in one iteration, and my drainage plan didn't pick that up, and we didn't shift the catch basin. So the intent of that catch basin would be to be in a walkway area or directly adjacent to a walkway area where it can be maintained and where it would collect runoff from more or less the hardscape areas within the courtyard.
Do you think it's sufficient enough to catch all that roof water that sheds off in that one area right there?
So the catch basin itself is going to catch a certain amount of the roof water that comes, that's on the pitched roof. That pitched roof actually would drain into some of the garden areas that are adjacent to it. So there's going to be some infiltration on larger events. That catch basin has the ability to handle the amount of square footage that's draining to it. The flat roof portion of the roof, which would collect roof water in a drain, that drain would then dictate the size of the pipe that would more or less just go through the catch basin, and that the catch basin wouldn't, the catch basin's great, doesn't have any impact on what that roof water is doing as it goes through. So the pipes are sized to accommodate the runoff that's coming from that rooftop. And then the pitch of those pipes, you can imagine, we're going from a courtyard area that's on that first floor, and then we're going down to a catch basin that's along the adjacent drive aisle. And so we've got some slope to that, and we can put pitch on that pipe and increase the capacity of those pipes just by providing more velocity and more pitch across the.
Okay, stay right there. I really like your design. I want the people to know that this is probably the most cutting-edge stormwater design that this town has seen in front of it. I know for a fact that none of these plans with the sand infiltration area or this bio area off to the side, this is the first that's been in front of this planning board, and I would commend you for it. I have, so I have some questions about the cutting-edge design. And basically, where you just said that that pitch runs down, there's a catch basin right there, and if you follow the full process of this water, you have the sand infiltration area, black circle right there. So when water comes down, your steep area takes a turn, does it dump into that sand area? Or does it kind of, I don't know how it gets into that sand area. That's one question. When you follow that to the right, all the way down, it goes down and comes to the right, just opposite, just to the left of the bio retention area. Then there's another area where it shows a catch basin, and then it goes out the door to the other side. How does the water make its way into that other bio area? And the water out of that bio area are all in line together? It just doesn't make any sense to me.
So when you're designing the stormwater management technique, is that you're treating a certain volume of water based on a water quality volume? And that gets calculated based on the amount of impervious area that drains to it, and then a certain depth of rainfall. So you're really trying to treat what's called the first flush. So that first inch of rain creates a certain volume, and we calculate that volume based on the impervious area, and there's calculations that allow us to do that. That water would come into this structure here, that's a diversion structure, and that first flush, we make sure that all of that can go to the treatment practice, because we want to treat 100% of that. But as you can imagine, there's a limitation to the amount of stormwater you can treat, and you have certain storm events that are above and beyond the amount that you're required to treat and the amount that you can feasibly treat with the amount of money and budget that you have for a project. So what you do is you create a diversion manhole, and the pipes are set up such that the lowest pipe, the first flush, would direct it towards the sand filter. That sand filter is kind of like a plug-flow system where it goes in one end, goes through the filter, comes out the other end. So that's where it goes in, goes through, comes back out. This pipe, we're showing a storm drain that goes between the two, that's a high-flow overflow system so that during really significant storm events, you're not going to just blow out your treatment system. So you don't want to send everything into your treatment if you have one of these huge storm events. It's the same with a treatment pond where you have the spillway, the emergency spillway, and that spillway takes care of the larger, you know, 25, 50-year storm events that the treatment isn't designed to handle. And that's how the regulations work with alteration of terrain in terms of treatment. So that's what we've provided in this instance. In terms of the focal point, you can see kind of these hatched areas adjacent to the sidewalk, the walkway that goes around the building, and then at this parking spot, those are curb cuts or low points in the pavement where anything that more or less gets past this catch basin that's getting, treating from the sand filter, that comes down into this area and would either go into this or into here. And then this is kind of a low-lying area where this focal point sits. And again, you have a system where, you know, the amount of water that can go into the focal point is controlled by what the grades are around it. And then you have higher flows that then would spill over and utilize this catch basin. And this catch basin also is what takes the underdrain system for the focal point. So you have smaller, lower flows get treated in the focal point, move their way through, underdrain sends it back on its way. So this catch basin just kind of handles making sure that the stormwater still goes where it wants to go under existing conditions. So we're not trying to shift where we're sending stormwater. We're just trying to slow it down, detain it enough so that we're taking care of the new impervious area that's part of the development and treating that impervious area under a certain storm event volume.
Good, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, I have one comment. I'm assuming that, let's assume the application is approved. One of the conditions of approval, number three, is the applicant shall submit a time of building permit application, complete exterior materials list. And if there is any variation from the architectural design standards, the list of materials submitted will then be sent back to the planning board for our review. And that review would entail, I suppose, a defining that materials being used were not in to our preference and that we therefore didn't like what was going on and threw the whole process into disarray. I would like to suggest that rather than including condition three in the conditions of approval if this application is improved, that we suggest to the applicant that the applicant apply for a waiver of the architectural design standards, the justification being the presentation by the architect, which gave us a very good feeling, at least gave me a very good feeling, for the appearance of the building and the likely materials to be used on the exterior of the building. And we did get a commitment that there would be architectural shingles on the visible roof, not the flat part of the roof. So that's a significant portion of the design right there. So that's where I would like to leave it. If the applicant wants to make that request for a waiver, I'd be happy to turn that into a motion for a waiver for the design standards.
I was just going to comment, at the time the staff review was written, the rendering that you have in front of you was not ready. In fact, as I was writing the staff review, this iteration that led to the later discussion tonight, in fact, as I was writing the staff review, I was simultaneously emailing the applicant saying, do you have a materials list? How far are you with your design? So I don't, condition three was written at a time when there was very little information. So I was actually going to do the same at the time of, when we get to the recommended conditions, modifying that.
Okay, or actually.
Or striking it entirely, yeah.
Depending upon what the applicant wants to do regarding architectural design review standards.
Why waive the standards? We are saying that this meets the standards. I would not waive them.
If we, if we, if the board feels that the presentation by the architect actually does, does, sorry, if the board feels that the presentation by the architect does show compliance with the architectural design standards, then we're golden. But I don't think, I don't think the board has actually made that determination. If we want to.
Based on the testimony tonight, you don't believe that?
I believe that we have, or that the applicant has.
What they're discussing is generally, since the public hearing is open, now might be the time to vocalize a requested waiver of the architectural design guidelines. Should they feel the need to do that?
The one item that I may have, as I mentioned, we're still evaluating the specifics. The rendering shows our best intent as of today, and I fully believe that it will look like that. Specific brand of what kind of shingle we're going to have, if we had some latitude in that regard, if we were to request the waiver of the specifics, because the way I understand that you're looking for a specific name of every material, which we haven't provided, we've given you an indication of what our intention is. If the waiver would cover and give the applicant the flexibility in making the final selections, as long as it still looks like that when we're done at the end of the day, I think there would be some benefit to all of us to do that.
Vaughn, do you feel as if this meets the design criteria?
I do, and I don't think we should waive the design criteria by any means. I think we should say it meets the design criteria.
Okay.
And if there's a substantial change to be made, then we should have a look at that.
Certainly, I would certainly agree. I think we would all be agreeable. If a substantial change is intended then, or being suggested for whatever reason, I think that would warrant a return.
At the same time, you don't envision metal siding or vinyl siding?
Then we'll simply assume the design standards have been met and that item number three can be stricken from the conditions if we get that far.
Yeah, right. Okay.
If this building looks as it's shown in this diagram, I think it looks just fine.
We need to open the public hearing. If we could, somebody want to make a motion that this application is completed?
So moved.
Complete? Motion has been made?
Seconded.
And seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, I'm now going to open the public hearing. So any member of the public that wants to speak to this application, why don't you just come on up to the microphone and tell us who you are?
Suzanne Ryan, resident. I was disappointed that the board decided to make their waivers before, and vote on them before they heard public input. So now it's like, why bother?
Well, procedurally speaking, the board can't open a public hearing if they have an incomplete application. The planning board requires issuance of a waiver if they believe a certain criterion of the application hasn't been met. The waiver is only granted for the purpose of determining if the application is complete. Once it's complete, they are authorized to open a public hearing. This is not like a zoning board waiver.
So the waiver can be revoked from what they just voted?
The waiver at this point establishes that the application is complete. It's possible that even though they've granted a particular waiver, they make a condition or other finding if something is brought up during the public testimony to modify the application.
That seems backwards.
Okay, but that's what the regulations say.
It's what the law is.
Kind of stuck with.
Okay, so it would seem that this is not a minor site plan as your previous application was, given that they are going to have to get state site-specific application approval and all terrain approval. So that tells me that it's in that 40,000 or more square feet of disturbance of the.
This isn't a minor site plan?
This is or is not?
Is not. This is full site.
That's what I'm saying. I'm saying it appears to me that it is not a minor site.
No, no one said it was.
I am, would you just hold on? What I'm trying to do is make the point that it is not like your previous application that was a minor.
Okay.
More of a minor site plan. And given that they are applying for two state permits for disturbance of the area, it shows that it is a major alteration. Given that, I would think that to protect the town, even though it's a cutting-edge stormwater management plan, which is great, something that probably we can aspire to going forward, I would still think that the management, the oversight and so forth of this is quite detailed and needs supervision. And at the time of the write-off of approval for the permits, that somebody has to go in and look at it and say it was done the way it was supposed to be done. Therefore, long story short, I just cannot see how it can be justified not to require a surety bond. And I'm asking for the board's opinion, not the planner's opinion. The board has a duty to protect the town and that the site is developed in accordance with the safety and welfare of the area and the community. And that's my major concern. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Sandra Wentworth, Butter. I have a genetic hearing loss. I'm only get bits and pieces of the whole meeting. Watch it on TV. Watch it on TV, closed caption. I just got the feeling with this, all we care about is the drainage. I've got a ton of questions. Some of them have already been answered. I apologize for asking again. April nineteenth, nineteen ninety-nine, the zoning board approved thirty-seven units. But there were two special exceptions. I don't know if this been another meeting until three weeks ago about with the zoning board. One was working on phase two, require an additional special exception approval prior to implementation. There should be at least twenty-eight acres dedicated to this project. Is there still twenty acres to work on phase two? Which seems to change from eight units, sixty-one. It sounds like we can do phase two, but we can do whatever, apply for whatever we want. Still twenty acres?
Yeah, actually, it's a thirty acre parcel.
There's total thirty-point-eight-one acres. And the zoning board said there will be at least twenty-eight acres dedicated to this project. So I didn't know there was twenty acres left for phase two. So they can anyway switch from eight units to a nursing home. Just come in, say we wanna switch and do that, I take it. Okay. Skip to the main questions here. Talking about drainage and stuff, that was a big concern of mine. Because you get talking, you seem to care about snow plowing, you know. There's sand, oil, gas, diesel, salt melts, things like that that's gonna go into the wetlands. Someone's got to start protecting wildlife and wetlands. And I don't completely understand the drainage a whole bit. I have to leave that up to all of you. Like he was saying, it's gonna slowly seep into some wet areas. All those wet areas, there's peepers and stuff. Now it could kill some of that. Wonder how much it's gonna raise the water table? Because on the Bay Street side, this whole project will not affect my property. Not affected by the town of Wolfborough. It's all ledge. People know, most of Bay Street is ledge. I have a sump pump that runs almost twenty-four hours a day now, seven days a week, more from the way the town built up the road. Going down the hill, which would be behind a Taylor home, there's some pumps there that run all the time. Water table's coming up. Some of us, some of them are gonna be sunk. So that's a very big concern of mine. I did wanna ask, and I guess they are, if the grading and drainage construction plans were complete and about the wetlands? And does the EPA get involved at all when you're talking about putting water and stuff into the wetlands? They will be notified, track into it?
Yeah, let's do it.
It's addressed through federal and state law.
It's what?
It's addressed through federal and state law. The EPA is not individually contacted for an application like this.
Changing the subject, are the utility plans complete? Can you add on to the existing utilities or have you gotta redo?
Well, you wanna address that?
Okay.
Do you wanna address as you go? Okay, all right. Yeah, why don't you keep going and then he'll address the issues?
Next question, is the sewer profile complete? Gonna have to add more, can you add existing lines and what do they have? Or they gotta put another whole thing? Because we're going from original plan, eight units, to sixty-one, I believe I heard, units. Gonna be a big thing. Does the entrance from Bay Street, is this accommodating for a nursing home? Or will have to be enlarged for more traffic? In particular, fire apparatus, delivery trucks, some of them will be summies bringing food concerns, shipping and receiving. Is, that was a question? Another one, is there something in place for erosion control? Is special filtration being planned for medical waste? Or is that all going to go into the sewer system? Going back to another one, I said, is there to be a sewer pump station? Or is the one that they have big enough? We're going from eight units to sixty-one, a lot more. I wondered if an impact was done on Bay Street? If it's gonna need road improvements? Can the existing road accommodate so much added traffic? With Taylor Drive adding the eight units? I think it's accommodating, but you're talking sixty, sixty units. See where I wrote it down? You're talking three shifts, eight hours a day. I would say minimum, you're talking twenty people a shift because you have all the medical personnel, doctor possibly, the nurses, L and A. You got a maintenance man, you got the kitchen help. So if it's sixty times three, that's a hundred and eighty cars going in and out every day. Have to remember, it's already been improved for the boat museum, forty parking spots for cars, twenty for buses. And they assume they're gonna fill them two and three times a day. So if they fill it twice, you're already adding a hundred and twenty more cars up and down the road if it ever gets built. In the Taylor home, I wonder, they've got a nice circle down. They have two entrances, filter bed road, break for the circle. Come off on the side is where those eight were going. Now you want a sixty-one unit building with most of the people incapacitated to walk, to get out if there was ever a problem. You've only got the one egress. Can you get enough, if there was a fire or tornado, tornado, can you get enough people in that one egress to get the people out? You're not gonna have them walking out. How much room is around the building? I couldn't see the pictures because he was presenting them to you. But I know in the original plan of the nursing home that was too tall, you know, there's parking around it, but you'd need a lot of room if you had to get several fire trucks in there, a bunch of ambulances. And I wonder, will there be an alarm system, a frequency going off? Are you going to be able to, is it gonna be audible outside? So all the neighbors and people around are going to hear it. Will that be internal? The question I had. What about back skylighting? Right now, I'm surrounded. When I stay at that house, it's like living in a cafeteria. And I have not talked to Taylor Home, but I wish they would do a little bit more about their buffers. Originally, they were supposed to have a ten-to-fifteen-foot buffer around my property. I think all of them, back of my property. They've stripped thirty to forty feet of the buffer. Look into that house and now I can see the house across the street with all the lights. When the last meeting, the board of zoning board did not put what, about they just put a Taylor home, lot number, whatever, case number. We all thought it was about the recreation building. There must have been a snag. When that came out, they poked two more holes through my buffer. Good fifteen-feet one, and I'm looking in a mess. So I think it's important to make sure there's a buffer around it. And I'm not complaining to the Taylor Home right now because I haven't discussed it with you. So that's my problem. And are there gonna be more signs put up? The sign existing in the nineteen ninety-nine agreement, it was no more than twenty-four square feet. Are they gonna put up a lot more signs? Some of my concerns about right now.
Okay, all right. Somebody wanna address those?
Lot to digest. Just for my information, are you the abutter to our entrance, just to the one side of our entrance? Yes. No, I'm asking the location of your budding property, just so I get it in my head as I describe this. Okay. Okay. All right, so there's a lot of things here. Nick and I'll take a stab at just giving you the Taylor perspective on this. My understanding of the approvals going back to nineteen ninety-nine, called for approval of forty independent cottages. They were built over stages. They were not done all at the same time. In fact, CCI built them all over the course of that time. Phase two, as I understood it, showed up on our site plan as what we're currently building as the amenities plan at the entrance on the left-hand side. Phase two was always to be an unidentified future building for the purposes of benefiting the residents. The section that we're building this building at called for the eight additional cottages. And all of the site work that Nick did has calculated any change between the original site plan that accounted for the eight buildings and the additional impervious or space of the assisted living building that we're going to build. All of that was taken into account. The wetlands, that was a question that we wanted to protect them. And I can assure you that by the standards that have changed since nineteen ninety-eight, when the designs first were built or contemplated for this project, have exponentially increased to the point to protect the wetlands. Currently, Nick's and DuBois's King's plans for this keeps as much of the storm water that is gonna be generated from this out of the wetland. Most of it goes into the ground on the site with only the overflow water going anywhere near the wetlands. Additionally, the original site plan that was approved back for the forty cottages was much more intrusive into what we would consider the actual buffer and wetlands themselves. And what we've done is actually curtailed any of those original designs and pulled all that water per the new regs and treat it on-site. So it doesn't make it into the wetlands now. So the wetlands are pretty well protected. And you know, if you look around Filter Bed Road, you know, we have the sewage treatment plants there. We have storage of hundreds of boats up the road. You know, what Taylor intends to do is maintain all of these things. I mean, we don't have grease and oil dripping out of the vehicles. We have an active snow removal plan. And to address the number of vehicles going in and out of the property, I don't really think there'll be much of an impact to the abutters or even the Bay Street. Because in doing the calculations for the parking, we have to take into account the type of residents that we have. People in nursing or assisted living or even memory care really don't do a lot of driving. And one of the amenities that Taylor intended to do, and we've brought before the board in the past, is that we offer full transportation. So even if those residents do wind up being mobile, we transport them in our own bus, even to the end of the property to go to the pool, to the new amenities building. There won't be a significant amount of residential traffic going in and out of this other than, you know, the incidental deliveries for the services, for the food service, supplies for the operation and staff changing over at shift change. Raising of the water table, I don't believe that's a concern. I'll let Nick address that a little bit further down the road. But to be honest, the water that falls down on the property isn't increased by the size of the building. It's just where the water goes that we have to control it. And with the majority of the water being treated on-site and going into the ground, there's really, in my mind, little risk that we're going to wind up having a raised water table that may impact any of the abutters. The utilities, you know, realizing that we've been working on this for two years we've been working on this, utilities currently exist. They were built for what essentially amounted to forty cottages, the electricity for that, the sewer, the water and all those supporting systems. We have done an analysis on that in terms of, we have plenty of water. The sewer system has been profiled. We're just evaluating the size of the ejector pumps in that current sewer station. And the actual treatment station is right across the street. So we're pretty confident, in fact, we're very confident that the existing utilities are already in place substantially to meet the requirements of this building with a few minor tweaks. For instance, this building will require three-phase power. Across the street from this, around the corner at Filter Bed, the city just brought in all-new upgraded three-phase power lines. So we have the power there. Should we need higher voltage or three-phase power, it's available at our property to bring across. We've already addressed water and sewer. We've already got cable TV. We've got internet and all those utilities are existing on the site. So we're pretty well covered when it comes to that. Again, that's what two years of planning does for us. One of the things that was not addressed with the planning board, and we may have kinda missed this, to your point, having two entrances, we did intend to pave the Filter Bed Egress Road out there. I don't believe it shows up on our site plan, but that was always our intent. Not really for any other purpose other than to allow walking traffic, secondary egress out of the campus. In that case, we would remove the gate that's out there and we would open it up to Filter Bed Road, knowing that down the road, many conversations have been had within the town of Wolfborough in terms of what may happen with the Filter Bed Road access, knowing that there's a movement to change the zoning over there to a commercial-type zoning. It's on everyone's interest to actually pave that and make it a secondary egress into our campus.
Is the Filter Bed Road paving, is that part of which project?
It would be rolled into this, into this project to provide that we would have a secondary means of egress. The front entrance, you know, in the process of building the amenities building, we've only had one issue where we couldn't fit something in that front entrance. And that was one truck bring, the largest excavator that can go over the road came in and it wound up hitting the curb. Most, everything coming into that property will go into the front entrance without any difficulty at all. So there shouldn't be any, shouldn't really be any issue bringing materials or trucks or anything like that going in and out of the front entrance. Erosion control, Nick can discuss that during the project. That's a requirement. And again, I wanna reassure the board and our abutters that, you know, it's one thing to be held accountable by, you know, a local board, like a planning board or a zoning board. But when we do these large-scale operations and CCI, DuBois and King, Taylor Community have done this before, you're under a much higher level of scrutiny with the AOT, meaning that they're defining what you're going to do, what you say you're going to do, you need to do. And that's a long process. It takes over three months to get that approved. It takes a lot of conversations and hard work on the part of our civil engineers. And I just wanna assure the board that whether or not there's a requirement to do any bonding, that work has to be done. In addition, if the town mandates that we have this conditional inspector at certain period of time come and looking at this, there are other inspections that are happening. For instance, let me just kind of explain how this process is. We're working with an architect, we're working with a civil engineer. We've hired Coneston Construction, who is a construction manager who manages this project. He does inspections. We also have a bank because we go to the bank and disperses funds. The bank on a regular basis does inspections of the project to ensure that their money's being well-spent, that the money is actually doing what was intended to do. There are also site-specific inspections that happen that are triggered by the AOT. Then post-construction, there are things that Taylor Community is required to do, such as stormwater inspections, managing the retention ponds, snow removal, documentation and so forth. So there's multiple layers of inspections and oversight that happen with these kinds of projects. Medical waste is all permitted. That's just like all of the rest of our medical facilities. Those are handled, so that shouldn't be an issue. Road improvements to Bay Street, as I mentioned, you know, the number of cars that'll be coming here, as Nick mentioned, we've oversized the parking lot to account for family visitors. But typically speaking, very few of our residents will have cars at this facility. Most of the parking will be our staff. And if those staff choose to. So they will be shuttled by Taylor Community vehicles, primarily as their mode of transportation. The emergency egress, I just addressed that. I think that's something we could discuss further as we get further along with the site plan and approvals. We don't plan on having any external alarms. You can imagine the level of compliance that's required when you're talking about a three-level healthcare facility, when you have, you know, residents of a higher age that are mobility-challenged. We have to jump through a number of hurdles, including inspections and pre-meetings with the DHHS to ensure that this building meets every applicable compliance code, including modes of egress, modes of alarm systems, sprinkler systems. All that is in process. In fact, we start our first meeting with the DHHS for an introductory meeting this week to talk about those things and to present our plans of both emergency and egress. Dark sky lighting, Nick can also address. We're planning on being dark sky compliant with any of the site lighting here. There isn't any real need to have any super-bright lights outside. There won't be a lot of walking traffic outside. The buffer retention pond, I can address really quick what happened with their, to the boards, so you understand that our entrance, as you come on our property, to the right is a very small retention pond. That pond was originally designed to catch water coming from our site, primarily from the driveway entrance. It catches water sheeting off the pavement and runs it into a pond that has an overflow mechanism that goes underground, under the road on Bay Street. That has been let grow, overgrown for the last 20 years. It has not been maintained, so as part of this project inquiry, we found that. We needed to detail the size of that. We needed to make sure the outlet structure was okay, so we cleared that property line so we could identify two things. One, how that retention pond was operating, how the mechanics of the outflow structure were working. And then we had to identify how those two other utilities came in on the pole that's right on your property line there. That pole actually houses Atlantic Broadband and Consolidated, and we weren't sure who owned that pole, and that pole was actually being impinged by all the branches and the trees that had overgrown. So at Taylor's request, we had some contractors, and our guys went in and cleaned that up. So that's unfortunate. I apologize that we did that without letting you know what was happening there, but that was kind of a precursor to getting ready for the amenities building project that's ongoing. I don't know about the signage. We haven't really gotten that far. I believe our current signage just needs to be updated to reflect that we have now campuses in Laconia, on the Back Bay Campus, and the Sugar Hill Campus, but I don't believe it'll be any larger. I believe we're very happy with the size it is now. May just have a couple of different wording, that's all. Nick, do you want to explain?
Hey, just a second. How many people are you going to be employing for this facility?
I don't have that number in front of me, but we've done a number of pro formas that indicate how many. It depends on each shift. Obviously, the first shift will probably require the most staff there, and it drops off during the second and third shift.
I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, but it being an assisted living, it's not generally labor-intensive as like a hospital would be. The labor would mostly be coming from our dining operation, and if I remember the number correctly, we think at a high time, we're going to have 12 employees at the highest point, but not throughout the whole day.
Okay, all right. Thank you. And also, there was a mention of a New Hampshire DOT permit?
AOT.
That's the AOT, which is a state site-specific.
Wasn't DOT?
No, AOT.
I was wondering, yeah. Okay, all right. I think you hit most of them, I think.
If there's any questions, if you want any clarifications. One thing that was mentioned, EPA, whether EPA gets involved in a project like this. In fact, they do. When you have over an acre of disturbance, you need what's called a stormwater pollution prevention plan. So that stormwater pollution prevention plan addresses erosion control and sediment control during construction. So the project has a discharge permit. It's a permit issued by EPA, and it's a general construction permit. So during construction, there are typical activities that happen, and those activities need to be addressed in a plan, a stormwater pollution prevention plan. That plan gets developed once a contractor, a site contractor, is selected, because that site contractor is heavily involved in the production of that plan and how that plan is going to get implemented. Part of those requirements are inspections, routine inspections after certain storm events and on a weekly or bi-weekly basis. So they would go around the site, look at stormwater, excuse me, erosion control features of the site, like silt fence or silt socks or de-watering basins or sedimentation basins, and make sure that they're adequate for, you know, they've survived the previous storm event, and they're being maintained and ready for the next storm event.
Any other member of the public wanting to add anything?
Yeah, I want to go on the record that because cleaning that buffer has affected the abutters' sightline and has created an issue for her. We're willing to plant some screening buffers along that stone wall, just as a good faith. I apologize for not coming to talk to you guys. Come see me after the meeting. We'll talk.
Thank you. No one else? Okay. And board members, any questions?
I do.
Okay.
Loading and unloading. What are your plans for that, for a big loop area in the front? Is that where the loading and unloading? We've got a food trucks and all kinds of trucks and big stuff. Where's it going to go?
So they have control, you know, some control over what types of vehicles come to the facility based on their contracts with food vendors and trash pickup. Those probably the two major pieces of equipment or vehicles that control what maneuverability we have on the site. So what we would propose for maneuverability, and as you know, Taylor Drive is a private driveway. It's limited use. It's a loop road. What would happen typically for trash? We'd have trash trucks drive in, nose in, access dumpsters, lift, drop, and then be able to reverse back and then out this way. So trash hauling vehicles can make that turnaround. Similar with food service trucks up to a certain size. If they get a situation where they have a tractor-trailer that needs, that they, their vendor is using for delivery, they would have to negotiate times where they're not going to impact traffic here, and essentially, they would be able to back down this road into the loading dock. It's relatively straight so that we can keep, you know, maneuverability to a minimum, and deliveries would be done that way for tractor-trailer.
So Filterbed Road access, that's a narrow area. There's wetland on both sides. I'm not seeing anything on this application for any of this stuff. I don't really feel that good about them just saying, "We're gonna do something with it." I mean, want to chime in, Tavis?
It was approved with the previous.
For what it's worth, the access and the wetland crossing are already there and improved in the simple act of paving that would not trigger site plan review.
And it was approved originally?
Correct.
With the two X.
So the woman spoke about the eight cottages. Now, a cottage was probably at one level, and now we're talking 61 at three levels. So how does that get through process?
The special exception was approved for elderly housing. If you look up the definition of elderly housing, it also includes congregate care and nursing home-type facilities, so...
That's for the public's information, that's all.
I understand.
I'd like to also point out that the town strategic plan also calls for increased elderly housing, including specific languages calling for CCRCs, of which this building is Taylor Community's first, you know, building, and is designed as actually as the healthcare wing of the CCRC. So the town is actually trying to accomplish these, and that's what this building does.
Okay, anybody else? Tavis, do you want to go over your condition?
Fairly standard recommended conditions first.
Well, he goes over it and then... No.
Fairly standard recommended conditions of approval first recommends a plan set that would include the additional handout that was presented this evening. Again, I'm going to modify the printed recommended condition. Number two would move from a Mylar to an as-built Mylar. Number three would be a cut sheet for all the exterior lighting details. Number four, applicant coordinate between the town, or coordinate with the town in establishing a construction observation agreement consistent with the Site Plan Review Regulations. As was expressed during the public comment, that would be the town's third-party engineer doing site-specific recommendations, or site-specific inspections to make sure the plan is fortified. And the last condition is the standard, all documentation submitted as part of the application package becomes the restricting controlling document. So for those looking at the written staff review, I have stricken number three and number six.
Left seven in?
Yes, sorry. All recording fees.
Not mentioned.
Okay.
So one through eight minus three and six.
Thank you.
Modifying two to be the as-built Mylar.
Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing now. All right. Board members, how would you like to proceed?
Be happy to make a motion to approve.
With the conditions?
Well, hang on a second. I said I would be happy to. Madam Chairman says I should. I'll go ahead and make that motion.
What did you say? I'm sorry.
Oh, I wondered. I heard some, I heard Peter starting for a second, so I wanted to make sure he was going to put the conditions in.
I'd be happy to approve case number 2021-25, tax map 203-047. Taylor Community, application as presented with conditions one through six, is it, as presented by the planner this evening?
Okay, and...
Six.
All right, one through six.
I'll second it.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Okay, as to Suzanne Ryan's concern, I mean, I think we had a pretty lengthy discussion about that.
Well, the board should be reminded that the purpose of the public hearing is for the public to offer testimony counter to or indifference to what was submitted.
Yes, right.
So I understand people have questions, but...
Okay, I just wanted to say that we did talk about that. Okay, all in favor of this application, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Absentions? Okay, all right. Thank you very much, folks, and thank you, folks, for coming.
I'd like a motion to approve.
Okay, all right. This is for 40 Island View Road, voluntary lot merger. They're two storefront properties on Lake Wentworth. Did you want to say anything else?
The only thing, I have a recommended condition of approval that the applicant be responsible for paying for the recording fees related to the notice of merger.
Okay, all right. Any questions?
Move to approve.
Okay, I'll second that. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I'll second it.
Okay. You want to speak about the Wolfboro Bay grant?
Briefly, because of the hour, I'll let the planning board know that Wolfboro Waters encouraged and supported a pre-application for a state loan to do a Wolfboro Bay watershed management plan. The town was not awarded a loan, but in fact, received an outright grant for the $100,000 required to do the plan. So for now, pat on the back to everyone that's going to be involved, the town, at Tarpe Lakes Region, and there will finally be a Wolfboro Bay watershed management plan, so everyone should be happy that that is happening.
And now you get to do the actual application, right? Once we've gotten the money, right?
Correct.
Yes.
I think I heard you, yes, but you're smiling, so I'll say yes. One other discussion item I wanted to bring up, I've made Kathy and Mike aware of this, but want to let the board know that the town has received a petition warrant article requesting modification to the definition of existing building or structure. Functionally, it would remove the line, accessory buildings or structures shall be limited to a single half-bath located on the ground floor. Now, those that are quick to remember, last year, this was the amendment that was just voted in, so now the petition is to come out. So the question I have for the board is, would you like me to schedule that for public hearing at the next available opportunity?
Yes, I would think probably January.
Yes.
First of January. Okay.
Other than that?
All right, and public comment?
Got to watch him. He showed up for zoning board last night, too.
Can we put the minutes off?
Sure, you can put minutes off.
That be okay? All right.
Could we make a suggestion that minutes be reviewed again and the minutes that we look at next meeting be more complete than they are currently? I noticed that none of the public comment that we heard from two members of the public regarding density were included in the minutes here. I would have assumed they should have been.
I think there was a printing problem.
There was a what?
There's a printing problem. Page one is page two, page six, page nine.
I was going to say, because the minutes I reviewed included them, so yes, we'll make sure those pieces get back in.
Okay, all right.
So these will go to the next meeting. Also, with regard to the next meeting, the Stormwater Subcommittee has a proposed draft, which is currently out circulating with professionals in the field, both those that may be seen as having a vested interest in the town, such as, this isn't to offend anyone, but Norway Plains, White Mountain, the frequent flyers. It's also gone out to places like CEI, FB Environmental, UNH Stormwater Center, et cetera. I've requested all of their comments be received back by the day prior to your next meeting so that there can be an update as to feedback, and the board can help guide the committee on next steps.
Okay, well, it does need to go to the committee for the recommendations.
Yes.
Yeah.
I just wanted the board to know where it was going.
Yeah, right.
Because I'm trying to time it out with reporting times.
Okay, great. Very good.
Thank you, Tavis.
Okay, motion to adjourn?
The move, the move.
Second?
Multiple seconds.
All in favor?
Everybody second.
Okay.
Everybody second.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.